Stand for the pledge allegiance. Please remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Moses has asked everyone to stand. We're going to observe a moment of silence for three members of the Freehold Regional High School District family who have passed away in the past few weeks. We have Ashley Vogel, who was a custodian at Koltznek High School, who passed away suddenly on November 5th. Vladimir Kushinov, one of our students, who was killed by an automobile on Route 18 last week. And Timothy O'Boyle, who is our science supervisor at Marble High School, who passed away on Friday evening. So please, if we can observe a moment of silence, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised as Park Press, issued November 30th, 2011. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified and requirements of posting of notices have been met. Reports. Superintendent's report.
This evening, as you know, is a special board of education meeting, and we did not originally have December 12th on our meeting agenda. However, we felt, given the sheer magnitude of the number of presentations that were on the docket, as well as December 19th being the board of education meeting where we recognize our fall achievement, that we were best served to break this up over two meetings. So this evening is a special board meeting dedicated to three presentations. So there's no action on the agenda other than to enjoy these three presentations. So first off, we have our comprehensive annual financial report, our audit overview. Gentlemen.
Thank you. My name's Bob Swisher. I'm a partner with Suppley Clooney Company. It's my brother John. He's the audit manager. He handles the day-to-day work. Each year, the school district is required to have an audit, and at the end of the audit, we make a brief presentation on our findings at that audit, and at the end, if there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them at that point in time. There are two reports that you get. There's the comprehensive annual financial report, and there's the auditor's management report. If you have the reports with you, if you haven't... The thick report is the comprehensive annual financial report. That report is prepared by the school district. It's the financial statements of the district. It's important to note when I say that it's prepared by the district. We do 29 school districts, and this is the only district that we do that can actually prepare comprehensive annual financial reports themselves. Some other districts, they can give you some schedules, but this district actually gives us the document, which is very commendable. And what that does, that allows us to actually spend our time doing auditing. In all the other districts, we do our auditing, but there's also time spent developing the financial statements along with the records. That report is broken down into four sections. There's an introductory section, which is basically a synopsis of the whole cadre. It has charts and graphs in there. There's also a section on the initiatives of the district going forward. It has an organizational chart, the list of officials, the list of the board members and things like that. The second section is the financial section, and in there is the financial statements of the district and the notes to the financial statements. Also in that section is the auditor's opinion, our opinion on the financial statements. This year, again, the district has an unqualified opinion, which means your financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The third section is a statistical section, and as it's named, it has a bunch of statistics about the district and the surrounding areas, both financial and demographic and economic statistics. And then the last section in there is the single audit section. That talks about your federal and state grants. It has schedules in there that shows what you spent on grants, and it also has our opinions on your federal and state compliance. You get these grants, you have to comply with various requirements, and we test them to make sure you're still in compliance. The other area of the report is the auditor's management report, and that details, goes over the areas that we look at in compliance. It talks about how we test for payroll, your student activity accounts, your ASSA reports, purchasing policies, things like that. And in that report, if we have any findings, we would make those aware in there. For those of you here, last year, we had four findings last year. Having reported it, all four of those have been corrected. This year, during our audit, we had one finding. It dealt with outstanding checks. We're recommending that the board review any outstanding checks that are over one year old, whether they should be reissued or canceled for some reason. So we're recommending that the board take that action this year. I believe you'll have a corrective action plan at another time that will address how it's going to be taken care of. Overall, the district is in good financial shape. Your surpluses are healthy. You were able to put some monies away for an emergency reserve, a capital reserve, and a maintenance reserve. I think that's very important in this day and age, living in a 2% levy cap. You can't raise that taxes more than that, so you've been able to put some funds aside so that emergencies come along, you'll be able to handle them at that point in time. So overall, like I said, the audit process worked out well. The staff was very professional, very cooperative in doing our audit. And if anybody has any questions about the audit report or the audit process, I'd be glad to take them.
Mr. Moses, I don't have any questions.
I hope not.
I do have some comments.
I have a comment.
Okay.
I had one comment in regard to the outstanding checks.
Yes.
Was it something that is unusual compared to other districts, that we have so many outstanding checks?
Not really. The volume of... As you do your bank reconciliation, you have outstanding checks. And generally, they're either cashed, or there's a reason why they weren't cashed. And generally, we like to see people, once a year, look at those and say, "All right." Because if you don't do it, it'll go on and on and on, and it becomes harder and harder to investigate them. So we kind of recommend you do it on an yearly basis.
Is it the map, or the number of checks that we should be concerned with?
I'm not sure about the map. Probably the number of them. But again, it looks like something hadn't been done in a while, and we're suggesting you do it now.
Okay, Sean.
I just wanted to comment, as a former auditor myself, there's a couple different ways to approach the job of auditor. You could take the very finite approach and come in, do the audit, and be on your way. The other approach is far more useful to the district, and that is a more thoughtful approach, understanding the operation, understanding the nuances of this district and the challenges that we present. And I just want to... I think Suppley Clooney, the firm, brings a lot of good perspective from their many clients to share and really bring its additional value, because the audit itself is a historical document for me. It's last year. That year's over. I'm on this year. But that additional input is helpful to me. So I think that's valuable, and I thought it was worth mentioning. And I also just wanted to... A lot of the underlying work done that is represented by this audit is done by the staff in the business office, and I just wanted to note that for the staff in particular, Alex Ferreira, and also Jason Schimpf, who has moved on in his career to another district. But those two gentlemen do a lot of work that goes into a clean audit report like we have this year. So I just wanted to mention that. So thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And what Mr. Boyce is humbly avoiding is that it emanates from him. And if folks at the Freehold Regional High School District haven't figured it out by now, Sean is, in my estimation, the preeminent business administrator in the state. So there's a reason that a district with $180 million has one corrective action item, which I think is phenomenal. So hats off, Sean. We now have... I'm going to turn it over now to Dr. Judy Ferguson and Mr. Jeffrey Moore, who will unveil the draft of our strategic plan and talk about the strategic planning process to this point.
Evening. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to present our progress to date on the strategic plan, and also thank you for the opportunity to serve in this capacity as the internal coordinator for the planning process. It's been, so far, an amazing professional conversation, and it's only just beginning. So it's rewarding in many ways for all of us who are involved and will continue to be so for the larger group that comes into the process. I'm also really honored to introduce Dr. Ferguson to you tonight. Dr. Judith Ferguson's leadership is well-known through her contributions to the New Jersey Association of School Administrators. As a longtime member and past president of that organization, she has made numerous state and national conference presentations and has been widely published on various topics related to school administration and strategic planning in schools. At the national level, she has served on committees for the American Association of School Administrators and as trustee of the Horace Mann League. During her 23-year career in administration, Dr. Ferguson served as superintendent in the New Jersey School Districts of West Morris Regional and Newton and Hopewell Valley. She also served as business administrator for the Princeton Schools. Whatever there is to do or to be done in school leadership, Judy has done it, and it's just been incredibly valuable to share conversations with her about this process and to have her guidance as we set our way on this road.
Thank you. And having been, as Jeff mentioned, a former business administrator, I do want to congratulate you, Sean, and your staff. We're an excellent audit. I know how hard it is to get just one recommendation, and that really isn't a very important recommendation. So that's the good news. I mean, it's good to do, but when I heard that I was following the auditor tonight, I said, "Well..." I said, "Do you have any recommendations?" And I think it was Mr. Sampson who said, "Yeah, we have one." I said, "Oh, it's got to be your Student Activities Fund." And he said, "Well, no, it's not the Student Activities Fund." So I'm impressed that you didn't have the Student Activities Fund as your recommendation, which is like, I think 99% of the school districts in the state end up having that one. So that's a good audit, and it's good to know that you have a little money in reserve. That's a great place to be in today's economy. But I'm here to talk about strategic planning tonight. And just a very brief presentation, I was asked to do kind of an overview of what are we doing and why. And that's kind of what I want to answer, and then Jeff's going to talk about the process to date in terms of how we've involved others and what the product is in its draft form today. So what is strategic planning? It's a process by which an organization defines its core purpose and designs the means for achieving it, basically. That's the definition. It's kind of a reinvention of the organization, which is very important to do, because an organization that doesn't reinvent itself, that doesn't rethink its purpose and keep itself current, is going to become out of date and eventually lose its status and its prominence in the business, whatever that business is. And the business we're in is education. So in order to remain competitive and to move the organization forward, one needs to do something like strategic planning, if not strategic planning itself. So why do we do it? I like this little quote by Stephen Covey, who has a nice short book called First Things First. And basically, he says, "The main thing is to keep the main thing the main thing." While he's not talking specifically about strategic planning, he is talking about the importance of focus, and strategic planning gives you that focus. Another definition that is specific to strategic planning talks about vision, and it's in Peter Senge's book, The Fifth Discipline. Peter Senge is a professor at MIT from the Sloan School of Management. He's a well-respected authority. He talks about shared vision not being an idea. It is rather a force in people's hearts, a force of impressive power. When people truly share a vision, they are connected, bound together by common aspiration. Shared vision is vital for the learning organization because it provides the focus and energy for learning. That's the first quote I've seen where it really talks about force being behind strategic planning, and I like that connection. Vision and mission are very similar. They're used interchangeably in the business of strategic planning. They're slightly different. Vision precedes mission because one has to have a picture, a large picture of where you want the organization to go, kind of an image, a mind picture, where you want to see the organization in the future. And from that imagined state, you draw out a purpose and a specific statement that is called the mission. There was a visioning process, and Jeff will talk a little bit more about this, but Mr. Sampson called together a representative group from the community and others and staff who talked about the former mission statement that... Actually, it's the current mission statement that you have on the books in your school district. And from that culled out the essential pieces that then were shared with the planning team and were incorporated into the new proposed mission statement. So the why strategic planning? Are you still with me on the same slide? Oh, you're ahead of me. That's okay. That's all right. Because that's an image of what we're talking about. Strategic planning unifies an organization. It clarifies. It gives focus and purpose. Most importantly, it helps you spend your resources wisely, and you spend resources where you say you intend to spend your resources and don't get diverted or distracted by other interests that come along if they're not in the plan. And it's very easy in the school, in the business of education, to have special interest groups or even good ideas that come up along the way, where they all have merit and people want you to spend the resources that way. But when you have limited resources, a 2% cap, and you're restricted in what you can spend money on, you really need to know what's most important. And the strategic plan will give you the discipline that you need to stay focused on what you said was your purpose, what you said were your plans, and you said this was what you're going to put your money behind. So it helps you say no in a very logical, rational way, and it helps you say yes in a logical, rational way. Okay. And this is kind of just an image I put up there because I think it's important to demonstrate that when you work together on a plan in a school district, which you are doing, and it comes from the grassroots, and it comes up through the system, and it gets endorsed by the board, and everyone has buy-in to it, then you... That's the definition of shared vision, and that's what gives it the power. It's one thing for a superintendent or a board of education to sit down on a Saturday morning and say, "Well, let's draft a strategic plan." You could have done it that way, and you'd come up with a pretty good strategic plan, but it won't give you the buy-in that you need, which you have orchestrated through the process you've endorsed. So that's why we build shared vision. It's important. It gives you that maximum ability to be productive. Again, just to summarize, the vision is, you know, what is it we want to become in the future? The mission is the why. Why do we exist? And it all comes out of core values. What do we value in our organization? Which is one of the first pieces we worked on, because values are important to explain how you intend to behave in order to achieve your vision and your mission. And if you don't have a strong value system supporting that, you're going to lose your focus. You're going to get off... Not off key. That's not the right word I'm looking for. But offline in terms of your behaviors, and you won't be able to accomplish what you said you intended to accomplish. So it's a transformation process. Okay. Sorry, I didn't do that. The process we've talked about, you've already gone through the preparing. The preparing is agreeing that you're going to have a planning process, and in this case, deciding it was going to be comprehensive and you were going to have representation from all constituents in your community. You did that through having a community group first and then turning that over to a staff group that is doing the developmental stuff, and they've done a great job at that. You will then open that up again to having people participate in action plans in the future once you endorse this section of the plan. And those action teams can include staff members. It can be part of the planning team. It can be additional people. It can be members of the board. It can be members of the community. It can be students. It can be any and all who want to participate in that action team planning. Those action plans will become the meat of the plan, that's what you do on a daily, monthly, annual basis to accomplish the plan, and it becomes what you budget for as well. So that's the planning process, and I'll tell you about the parts in a minute. But basically, through the creation of action plans and making them happen, that's the creation plan, putting the strategic plan in action, you will begin to move forward toward that mission. This is a very dynamic process. It's not a situation where you come in and you write a plan and it's done. It is done for a while, but it gets revisited, and it's important to do that. It gets revisited annually at minimum and can be changed and should be changed as needs arise, as conditions change. But it gets reported out and monitored on an ongoing, regular basis so that you can measure your growth toward your plan. Okay. The last slide? Are we there yet? Yep, we're there. Okay. So just to recapping, we started with this vision of where people thought the district should be headed. It came out of, in large part, out of the original mission statement that has been guiding this district for many years, but it became much more powerful, and I think people... You have a lot more buy-in because you had a lot of people involved in deciding what was important in that process, what was important in that mission, and then reframing it into a new mission that not only has a mission, but also has with it major objectives that are measurable, demonstrable, and can really tell you whether you're accomplishing your mission. You have strategies which are critical because they are the pathways toward accomplishing your mission. They're the major roads to the mission, and those strategies will become even more defined by action plans, which is the next stage of your planning process. You could end up with as many as 50 or more action plans that will carry you over the course of a five-year period, and you're dipping them up on the basis of what's most important to do first, what should we do first, what can we afford to do first, and then what naturally follows in future years. The action plans are the aspect of your strategic plan that are most likely to change as conditions change, and for that reason, we really don't ask the board to approve action plans. You certainly are going to be asked to give input into them and to accept them as part of the plan, but the board will ultimately be asked to approve the mission, the objectives, and the strategies. Those are the three elements of the strategic plan that are critical for you to approve and give credence to, as people write. Essentially, they'd spend a lot of time and effort writing plans to help the district move toward the accomplishment of those three things. So that's why it's important for the board to be behind this completely before we invest a lot of people's time and energy in writing those action plans. So a tentative go-ahead in the near future, after all the feedback is back and the revisions are made, will be asked of the board. And then ultimately, when it's all put together, you'll have another chance at that. There are two pieces I didn't mention, and they're way out there on the side. They're called commitments. We will, before this whole plan is signed off on, ask the planning team and others to make commitments in writing to this plan. Commitments are important because they too provide discipline to the planning process. And basically, they are statements. "We will do this." "We will not do that." And there might be eight or 10 of those. There will be statements that people agree to. One of those statements, for example, just so you get a feel for what it might look like, is, because we haven't done this yet, is, "We will not let special interests detract us from our mission." That could be one. Not that you have any special interests in the Freehold Regional High School District. Right? That doesn't happen here. You could say, "We will always keep our mission, strategies, and objectives foremost in our planning and budgeting process." That would be a commitment. Those are the kinds of statements we talk about with that. "We will use data to guide us in our decision-making," could be another kind of commitment. So that's basically my section of report, and Jeff's going to lead you through the process and his wonderful technology skills. He's done terrific graphics along the way, and he's been an amazing internal coordinator to date, and I'm looking for that to continue in the future. You've picked a good person to be your internal coordinator for this process. He'll answer questions after he's done, I guess.
It's been, as I said, it's been incredible conversation, and Judy's guidance has been invaluable. I'm just going to move this out of the way. We have been talking about this process a lot in terms of metaphor, and it really is kind of a process that we don't know the subtle words throughout our interviews, Judy for us, certainly, but we talk about building something. We talk about going down a road. We talk about a stream flowing in one direction. We've been talking about all those kinds of things, and some of that has come through in the draft framework that I'm going to show you tonight. What I have up here is the website that is now live, which is going to be the hub for all of the strategic planning that's going on in this district from now moving forward. The website is compass... I'm going to work beside this again. It's compass.frhsd.com. There's no www, it's compass.frhsd.com. And the site is live now, and you can see it's got some stuff going on now, even in this early stage of the process. The steering committee has been busy over the fall to kind of craft the draft framework. They built something. They built something that is really sound for us moving forward now to create a plan that will carry this district through the next five years and beyond. Now, some of the steering committees here tonight, a few members of the steering committee with us tonight, the community relations committee as well, a lot of folks came together to inform this process. So I want to walk you through it by walking you through the website. The very first step for us, Dr. Ferguson gave us a more detailed description of this timeline. There's a snapshot here. And so this will track our progress through this first year into the spring as we work toward the final plan to present to the board. But also remember, this is a five-year process, so we look forward to this section of the site tracking our progress toward the targets that we set. We've been looking at a lot of examples across the state and across the country on how to do that. So our individual measurements, all of the things that we've got to count and look at as we determine whether or not we're on course in our plan, we're going to have available here throughout the entire five-year process of this plan. So whether or not we're on target here or off-target there will all be laid out. So far, we have our steering committee drafting the framework. The framework, which has been seen by the community relations committee of the board, has been with various student groups throughout the district over the past couple of weeks. Administrators and supervisors have viewed it, and starting tomorrow, we'll have a full court press with the staff and also the community able to see it through our website with a survey combined to gather their feedback. Framework is here. So just to give you a sense of where we are, we have a proposed mission statement, three objectives, and seven strategies that the steering committee developed through its work in October and November. This is a draft. This will change. They were presenting it to you as a first time now, but understand that we're in the middle of gathering the feedback on this. So this will change. I can already tell you... So whether or not we're on target here or off-target there will all be laid out. So far, we have our steering committee drafting the framework. The framework, which has been seen by the community relations committee of the board, has been with various student groups throughout the district over the past couple of weeks. Administrators and supervisors have viewed it, and starting tomorrow, you know, we'll have a full court press with the staff and also the community able to see it through our website with a survey combined to gather their feedback. Framework is here. Just to give you a sense of where we are, we have a proposed mission statement, three objectives, and seven strategies that the steering committee developed through its work in October and November. This is a draft. This will change. They were presenting it to you as a first time now, but understand that we're in the middle of gathering the feedback on this. So this will change. I can already tell you if you want to know, there are certain areas that I know are going to change based on the feedback that we've received so far. But I just want to point out a couple of things that were important to the steering committee and are important to the folks that we've asked about this process so far. Some of the words, inspire, navigate, some of these words have been very important through the process. And some of the poetry in this process, again, thinking of metaphor, thinking of all the ways that we have to talk about this. We could have chosen words like facilitate. We could have chosen words like guide, but the steering committee and the community relations committee being after that, we're looking at words that say something deeper than that. Something that gives us purpose, something that gives us more fire in our belly than facilitate. So these words, we kept coming back to them. We went through six or seven drafts of this statement, and once in a while, one of those words would fall out, and someone would come in and say, "What about inspire? What about navigate?" And it would come back in, and we'd all say, "Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's why inspire is really an important part to set." The three objectives, we've gotten a lot of reaction in our feedbacks to this word, "all." All students. It's an audacious, ambitious way to frame those objectives. Again, though, we could say, you know, 75%. And sort of get to that 75%, just done, check. But what we're talking about here with this word, "all," is this thing that we all get up every morning and come to work to do, realizing that, you know, if all students aren't really at the forefront of our thinking in this process, then, you know, we need to rethink what we're doing. "All students" is our objective. "All students" is who we come to work for every day. "All students" is the stated goal for us. And so we're going to work. We're going to work like that to get all students involved in achieving these objectives. So there are ambitions, ambitions to say "all," but that's important to our process. Our seven strategies begin to talk about the specific things that we're going to do, the specific programs, plans, et cetera, that we're going to begin to put into place to meet these objectives and ultimately then fulfill the mission. So there's a hierarchy going on here. As Dr. Ferguson showed us, underneath these strategies, we will have many, many dozens and dozens of action teams who are going to be developing the day-to-day plans and identifying the actual measurements that we're going to use to gauge our health towards, on that road toward our objective. Coming back to the process here, from the development of that framework, again, the framework has been out now for feedback for a couple of weeks with the community relations committee and other groups. Students, staff will be invited this week to take a look at it. A lot of the smaller groups of staff have looked at it already. The public will be invited into this website from our district website starting this week as well. We'll see a big banner on our district website inviting people in the committee to take a look. We have, on the 17th of November, we brought this framework to the community relations committee. So here, we have a video of a presentation that I did in front of that committee that is happening right now, and you're getting the gist of it now. So unless you really want to see the presentation, you don't have to go in and take a look at that, but it's there to kind of lay out again the process and in more detail than I'm speaking to tonight, go over exactly what we did to put that framework together. We also have our feedback here. So click on, I'm not going to click on it now because it's going to take me off our website, but we have a survey, an online survey, that anyone now can visit and provide feedback on the very specific sections, on our mission, our objectives, and our strategies, with some guiding questions. "This is what a mission should do. Does our mission do it? What else can you tell us? Other feedback you might have?" So that's available now. Now, the next steps, as Dr. Ferguson said, we'll ask for an adoption of that core framework, those pieces, from the board to get, and then we'll move into the spring into those action planning teams. Now, the key here, right now, this site serves as a place to get information about our process and also as a place to kind of provide some feedback through that survey and some other tools that were planned. But as the process moves forward, what's going to be very important to us as well is to make sure that this website supports the conversation that we want to have around this process. And that's a really important piece here. We're not just building a plan. We're building a conversation that should be guiding our efforts and should be something that we've always come back to throughout the five-year term of the plan and beyond. One of the things I've said over and over again, the steering committee, the 30 members, 30 or so members of the steering committee who worked for two and a half days and then beyond in this room to craft the framework. Mr. Sampson, in the beginning of the year, asked key district leaders, you know, "Who are the folks that you continually go to?" And any one of us could fill the room with folks, you know, we only had this room. So we had 30 folks in here. We could have packed 900 people in here with a direction like that. Who do you go to in this district? Who, where is the talent everywhere? But the 30 folks who came together here representing all corners of the district began a conversation that has to outgrow them, has to go out into the community, and has to go out to the rest of the staff and the students as well. And this website is going to be a key place for that to happen. So we're working on our next steps in terms of soliciting feedback. We're doing that now. But how do we involve folks in the conversation? How do we get them to lend their expertise and even their time, anyone in the community, even their time, to the action planning process? We're hoping to do a lot of that through the website and through social media such as Facebook and Twitter and some others. So this presence on the web is going to grow from here. Right now, we have our site. So if you go to the participate tab, what you'll see is an easy way to contact us, just the easy way to get to our survey. There'll be some tools through to get involved and to sign up for saying some things further on down. But this section of the site is also going to grow into a large conversation as more and more reflections and more and more comments are built into the process. Heading back to the home page very quickly, you can see just some other things that we're building into the site. We'll have a calendar always present of any strategic planning events. So tonight is the only thing on the calendar now. In January, I'll be visiting all the schools, and we'll have some other evening events planned to get some more feedback and more participation in the process. Use and update, so as different things happen, as we reach different milestones, tonight, again, being another one, we'll have news posted here, little news stories. So that little news story there is about our 11-17 meeting with the community relations committee. We'll write up tonight's presentation into a news brief and any other things that kind of along those to pack. We also have a blog, and we're going to be inviting many people to participate in the conversation here. Right now, you have a welcome message from me, and you have a blog post from Mr. Sampson. There's a blog post that is also mirrored on our regular website. And that's open for comments as well, so comments can pour in. What we're finding, again, as we build this thing, and all of us, everyone involved, realizes not just how important this is for the district, but how important it is for each of us professionally to be involved in this conversation, there's a need for us to sit back and reflect on that. Not just on the work we're doing for everyone, but how the work we're doing is also improving us as individual practitioners. So this is going to be a key place for that reflection. More and more staff and more and more community members are involved in this process. We're asking them to contribute here with their thoughts on the process and what the process itself teaches our students. And that's a key thing here. As we build this thing, this thing that we're building, this plan and this process, what is it at the end of the day, showing our students about how organizations work and what organizations can do when people roll up their sleeves and work together and point their efforts in the same direction? Talent is everywhere in this district. We're a high-performing district. Wonderful things are going on all around us in this district. But this notion of a structure that we can come together and build that will take all of that talent and point it in the same direction is, and it's mind-boggling what we'll be able to achieve then. And we don't, as we get deeper into that process and into those conversations, we feel less and less self-conscious about saying "all students." It sounds more and more possible to us the more we see this process play out and the more we see the talent and just the sheer determination of the steering committee and all of the folks who are involved. I don't think there's any end to what we can accomplish. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present, and we look forward to sharing more information with you at the polls.
Anybody on the board have any questions for Mr. Moore or Dr. Ferguson?
Yes. So alumni obviously have a very unique perspective on the district in that they can tell you honestly whether our district effectively prepares them for post-high school life. And recent alumni especially because they have the freshest opinion. So how are we planning to reach out to recent alumni to get their feedback on this?
Well, we have several, our guidance departments have the best sort of channels to some of those folks through some of the Naviance and some of the other tools. Any one of those folks are welcome certainly through the tools on the site, and we'd love to have their participation and their feedback through the action planning process. But we have contact, we have email contacts and other things, particularly in learning centers and academies where, you know, those students still are in touch. So we have plans with the guidance offices to round up as much of that as we can to reach out to as many folks as we can. The wider, you know, the wider participation, the better. You know, there's no limit to who all we would like to have come in and talk to us about this.
Yeah, I would like to make sure that we proactively reach out to them because sometimes it's just if they don't know that we're going through strategic planning, they're not going to go to the website.
Right, certainly.
I was going to ask a similar question, Mr. Moore, regarding proactively reaching out to the principals. I know that usually the same principals show the dedication of showing up frequently at all the meetings. And Mr. Simon, thank you for always being here. Mr. Galley, you say the same thing. I really appreciate you guys being here. But I, Ms. Higley, yes. And, you know, I'm always remiss in calling out different people, but Vince, you're truly an expert in the demographics and the growth or lack of growth in the district. And, yeah, Jeff, that light is like, I think I have a migraine headache with that thing all the time. Very good, Charlie.
It's the laser light show portion of this.
Oh, man. In fact, I passed a note to somebody, Bill Bruno, last week, last time about that light. But is your strategic plan going to address the growth or lack of growth in the district in the foreseeable future, meaning five years out there? Is there going to be a portion addressing that? Will there be an analysis? And I don't want to put you on the spot, Vince, but if you could send in some blogs on that, it would be wonderful. It really would. Thank you so much.
And what? The action planning phase, you know, it has to respect a couple of things. We have our mission and we have our goals, but remember also those three things, those three visionary elements that came forward from that prior mission. So we have supportive, you know, a comprehensive program, we have lifelong learning, and we have that supportive environment. And that supportive environment talks to facilities, it talks to all sorts of things. It sort of touched on, you know, population size and demographic shifts and all kinds of things. So as we build these action plans underneath our strategies, demographics data is sort of a natural kind of data that we can go to to measure our progress. So I can see certainly, you know, a place for that kind of analysis, an important place for that kind of analysis in the development of the plan, absolutely.
Thanks, Jeff. And one thing, since I'm calling out people in the audience, I just want to please indulge in, I'd like to recognize Mark Toscano, one of our new attorneys. If you could just stand up, and I'm so happy to have you here, and we're anxious to be working with you. Thank you.
I had a couple other questions. You had mentioned that student groups had reviewed the framework. What student groups?
Mr. Sampson asked us to look at, in each building, we asked social studies supervisors in particular through sort of curricularly-aligned courses to work this into analysis of, you know, government and politics. So we had several social studies classes around the district, looking initially at the draft framework. As we move into this next phase, this really is the feedback phase that begins tonight. The students will be invited en masse to provide any feedback that they can or that they want to. I'll be visiting each school to work with student groups and teachers, mostly in January, but as we get up towards the action planning phase into early February, I'll be making a tour of the schools to meet with student groups and teachers. So we have, you know, again, anyone at this point can come in, but we've had some nice activities in social studies departments around the district to get some structured feedback on the document.
I just want to make sure that's not just government and politics because a lot of the kids in the learning centers, especially med science, science and engineering, don't have the option really to take specific history courses, so.
No, understood. But again, you know, the feedback phase that's opening now is open to anyone, and we'll have real efforts to reach out to as many corners of the population throughout the district as we can. This process is only beginning, and the feedback phase of it is only beginning. So from this point forward, especially as we get into January and to the building tours, you know, we'll be looking forward to talking to anyone who wants to talk to us about this.
And one more, sorry. What is the projected date that the board would be approving the mission strategies?
Well, as we go through the feedback, some of that will depend on the kinds of revisions that we have to make. I'd have to defer to Mr. Sampson on a particular calendar. I know the sooner the better, only because it allows us more time to do the real work of this process. I mean, we've done a lot of work, and saying "real work" down the line, you know, I don't want to minimize what's been done already, but the action planning is like nothing that we've done yet. The action planning is really the heavy lifting. So the more time we have that, to have to do that to meet a May sort of unveiling of the full plan, the better. But we also want to be honest and true to the revisions that we have to make. So over this feedback phase, whatever we have to retool, we will. And we won't present it until it's, we won't present it for approval until we're sure that we've heard all those voices and that the document's ready to get your blessing.
I'd like to make a statement first. I'd like to thank you on behalf of the board for all the work you've done and all the work that you're going to do. And I don't want to put pressure on you.
I'll save that.
And also, I wanted to recognize, since I know that my good friend Carl doesn't maybe know him, recognize Jerry Barman who's here from Howe High School, one of the vice principals from Howe High School.
Heshy, I'm way ahead of you. We met and introduced ourselves prior to the meeting, so, you know, never like.
Carl, you're always ahead of me, I know.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you, Jeff. I feel like I should acknowledge someone here. I'd like to thank my mom. But thank you, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the work. I think that, you know, a lot of this, we had a meeting this afternoon with some of the press about this, and a lot of this can gravitate toward kind of highbrow philosophical discussions, which is where it should be. And it's important to be able to ground that in reality, and how does that manifest itself in the school? So, you know, I facetiously said this afternoon, "Well, we're solving the educational worries of the world with this." But that marriage between philosophical discourse and actionable items in the classroom are really what will make this plan go. And I think we have an excellent team to see it through, so thank you. Next up, we have Jennifer Sharp, who is an administrative supervisor. And for those of you who may not know, Ms. Sharp, Jen does a terrific job. The testing coordinator of any school district is perhaps one of the more thankless job positions in a district. It is an incredible amount of organizational skills, an incredible amount of attention to detail, and very easy for something to go off track. So Ms. Sharp does a terrific job in managing this in addition to her human resources responsibilities, and she will present the annual testing report.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson, and thank you, members of the board, for the opportunity to report this evening on how we are doing as a district with regard to the HESPA. And of course, the HESPA, that is the 11th grade test that students take to measure their proficiency level in mathematics and language arts compared to the New Jersey Core Content Curriculum Standards that have been set and placed by the state. So this is our report on the HESPA. But also, because this is a very exciting time for assessment, there's some information in the presentation related to the waiver that New Jersey has applied to, to the federal government, to kind of work around or work with NCLB and ESEA, which has not yet been reauthorized. It's four years behind schedule, so the state has applied for waivers. So that applies to our district need of improvement status. So we'll get into a lot of things this So, we'll get into a lot of things this evening. So, without further ado, the district testing report. There we go. Okay. What do the students endure during the March week of HESPA testing? Well, there is one day of mathematics in which the students, 11th graders and any 12th graders who are new to the district or who may not have been successful when they were 11th graders, they sit through a day of mathematics related to these topics, number, numerical operations, geometry, measurements, patterns and algebra, data analysis, probability and discrete mathematics. Then they also have two days related to language arts literacy in both reading and writing as well. And before I go any further, just some glossary items so that we're all speaking the same language because testing has its own vocabulary. The New Jersey state benchmarks are increasing targets for proficiency on this HESPA test, which interestingly enough is supposed to be getting phased out next year. So, as I said, it's a very exciting time to be the district testing coordinator, even though it's very detail oriented, it's changing and a lot of things are, are coming down the pike. So, we may be talking more and more about this in the near future. Another glossary item, the district factor group. You may be familiar with this one. That is a category, New Jersey places all of the school districts into categories ranging from A, which is the least affluent based on socioeconomic data from the census, to J being the most affluent, and we rank towards the J end at a GH district factor group. And this is because the state reports are put out in a format that allows us to compare. How are we doing vis a vis the benchmark for AYP? And how are we doing vis a vis the state average? And how are we doing vis a vis the district factor group? It's kind of like comparing apples to apples. Okay. And I wanted to give you what the benchmarks have looked like. This doesn't go all the way back, but you can imagine an escalating level of expected proficiency with the ultimate target in NCLB, when it was signed into law, it dictated that by March of 2014, every single student taking the test would score proficient or above 100%. So, in the 2011 to through 2013, the original plan, the math benchmark was going to be 86 and the language arts literacy benchmark at 92% of students who are expected to pass the test, which means scoring a 200 or better. Okay? So, this cho, this chart shows you the goals set by the state and proficient, advanced proficient, doesn't matter as long as you get a 200, it counts. I will, I did throw an asterisk in here to indicate that under the waiver system, this schedule of advancement in levels of proficiency is going to be abandoned in favor of a different system, which we'll see in a little bit. Okay. This is the exciting part. We are represented by the bar graph, the bar all the way on the right-hand side. Okay? So, the New Jersey, NCLB benchmark, we know is 86. That's the one all the way on the left. That's where we're supposed to be, okay, in March of 2011. The New Jersey average is the next one over. See the little guy next to him? Okay? That's 75.2. Unfortunately, that means that the average percentage of students scoring proficient or advanced proficient in New Jersey was only 75.2% of the students tested. Moving over apples to apples, our district factor group, 84.2% of the students scored proficient or advanced proficient in mathematics last March. Freehold Regional, 89.2. So, Freehold Regional, as you can see, is outperforming its peers at the state level and within the district factor group, as well as exceeding the NCLB benchmark. So, Freehold Regional exceeds the state average by a big 14 points and the district factor group by five. Okay. Now, this looks at a slightly different, looks at a slightly different way. This is looking at average scores. So, as we learn, 200 is proficient. The state average for the math score, 222.8. Okay? The district factor group average score, 230.5, and Freehold Regional is at 235.1, average math score from March of 2011. So, you can see that Freehold Regional students scored an average of 12.3 points higher than the state average and also 4.6 points higher than the district factor average in mathematics. So, whether you're looking at the average score or you're looking at percent proficient, we do compare favorably. And then we have the same trend with language arts literacy. Okay? The NCLB benchmark on the left-hand side of 92, but again, we're looking at expectations for percentage proficient or advanced proficient. Then you have the shorter average in the state of 89.6% of students tested scoring at 200 or above, the district factor group at 94.4, and freeholds at 97. So, that means 97% of the juniors who, who were tested last March in our district did score at a 200 or higher. Okay? And we exceeded the state benchmark by five points and district factor group by 2.6. So, again, in language arts literacy, we are doing pretty well. And then we have our average score. And the state average was 229.9 on the test, the district factor group average at 235.9, and our average at 239.1. So, our students are outperforming their peers at the state and the district factor group level in language arts literacy, again. But we're not at 100%. So, what happens if a student does fail the HESPA? There are things that kick in, okay? And we find out, I get reports, I have to download them, we communicate, it's, it's a very big day when those reports are released. So, what happens? Well, students are going to be scheduled into academic support instruction classes or ASI classes, as you may hear them referred to. They are going to receive additional support. They're also going to be pulled out of a phys ed class or stay after school for extra help. They are going to be hooked up with our 24/7 online tutorial programs. They also have not one, not two, but three opportunities to pass the HESPA in New Jersey. They can retest in, in October of their senior year. In fact, those results from this past October are being released Friday of this week and I download them before I come to work and ship them out remotely. I got to love technology. So, that everybody comes in and opens up their email and there they are. So, there's no waiting because no one wants to wait on December 16th for the results. And then, of course, again, in March, they can retest again. But in March, it's, you know, it's, everybody's kind of worried because again, this is the graduation requirement. Students cannot graduate and get a diploma in New Jersey without having demonstrated that they have the skills necessary. So, what else can we do? Well, there is this alternate high school assessment, or ASA, that can be taken as well, up to three times if needed. And if those different avenues are not successful for a student, they are also placed on an educational proficiency plan or EPP. And that plan or document shows how the student has grown to, to reach proficiency in different areas. If need big, and I don't think we've ever had this happen, a student's educational proficiency plan can be submitted to the state of New Jersey as a graduation waiver request, but I don't think we've ever had those because we've been successful, as you can say, our students are very high performing. District status. This is the least fun slide of the evening. 2011, 2012, that's this year, we are in DINNIE status, okay? District in need of improvement status. That is under the benchmark system that's being phased out and which we'll talk about in more in a little bit, what's replacing it. So, I want to make that very clear. Now, this district in need of improvement status is based on students who do not attend our high school anymore. Okay? They test a cohort of students and give them all those opportunities we just talked about with the March, the October, the March, all the ASA chances, the EPP, all of that, and then they say, here is your district status. So, the students who were first tested in the '09-10 school year, in that March of 2010, that's the cohort that resulted in us being placed as a district in need of improvement this past October. So, since we are a district in need of improvement, level one, what happens? Well, we have to have this discussion in public and we also have to send out or post on our website a letter to the public advising them of this so that they understand what does this mean, what are we doing about it? Additionally, there's a thing called a district need of improvement plan, which is a very comprehensive document which explains exactly what are we going to do about it? What are our plans to address the areas where we see weakness or problem or something is just not clicking for certain groups of students? So, what do we do about it? We get creative and we put into action plans that are going to help each different student. And the answer may be different for each child. The trick is to really diagnose what each child needs and design a plan that's going to help that child reach his or her potential. Okay. So, we reached our, all right. Did I go through backwards? Sorry. All right. The district, missed benchmark, sorry. We are supposed to reach our benchmarks. Every school is supposed to reach 40 benchmarks, 20 in math and 20 in language arts. Well, we actually made 237 out of 240. In Colts Neck High School, the economically disadvantaged subgroup missed the match, math benchmark. And in Marlboro, unfortunately, the special education subgroup missed the math and language arts benchmarks, both. So, those are the three we missed. And I already started talking about the district in need of improvement corrective action plan, and that includes very specific targets based on where we see the need. And these are some examples of interventions from the actual document, which we have submitted to the Department of Education as of this morning. We have targeted academic assistance in the areas of skill deficiency. So, if a child is having trouble in certain areas of mathematics, they're not just getting a one-size-fits-all mathematics tutorial, they're getting a tutorial based on their specific areas of skill deficit. So, that requires us to test and instruct and assess and then instruct. It's a series of events that takes place. It's not just coming after schools for some extra help with a teacher. It's, it's very scientifically based. Okay. And it's supplemental to their coursework. They're not being pulled out of math class to have math tutorial. They also are being signed up for specific 24-hour, seven-day-week web-based tutorials, including in math and language arts, the products that you see mentioned here, Pangia Learning, USA Test Prep, Vantage Learning's My Access, and Achieve 3000's Team Business. My quote from President Obama, "NCLB and ESEA waivers." The federal government actually came out to the states and said, "We are looking for states to come up with ideas." Not been able to reauthorize the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, or NCLB, No Child Left Behind Act, as it was called under George Bush II. So, they've decided to go to the states and say, "Bring us your best ideas to assist us in, in our work." And they want to provide some flexibility. I see flexibility written into this waiver idea all over the place. So, President Obama on September 23rd of this year said, in announcing the ESA waiver, "To help states, districts, and schools that are ready to move forward with education reform, our administration will provide flexibility from the law in exchange for a real commitment to undertake change. The purpose is not to give states and districts a reprieve from accountability, but rather to unleash energy to improve our schools at the local level." And echoing that, Secretary Ornie Duncan said regarding the waiver, "We want to get out of the way and give states and districts the flexibility to develop locally tailored solutions to their educational challenges while protecting children and holding schools accountable for better preparing young people for college and careers." So, New Jersey took them up on their offer and applied to the federal government in November of 2011 for next school year. So, this all goes into, into effect next school year, the 2012-2013 school year. And flex, what it will basically give New Jersey is flexibility regarding the 2013-2014 timeline for the 100% proficiency. Remember the chart with the increasing levels that, and the law that dictated that in March of 2014, everybody will score 200 or above? Well, there's going to be flexibility regarding that 100% benchmark and New Jersey in its waiver application, I quote it here, that New Jersey will establish ambitious but achievable goals. So, that's kind of an acknowledgement that 100% is not perhaps realistic on any given day. It also gives flexibility regarding district and school improvement systems. That's the district in need of improvement status. They're just not going to use that system after this year. So, although we're district in need of improvement this year, next year, there won't be any of those anymore. It just isn't going to be used anymore. They're going to have a different system in place. And it, it provides relief from what they call the one-size-fits-all approach to accountability, which as Karen Campbell, the Title I Director in Trenton, said, "It over-identified districts and schools as a DINNIE or CINNIE needlessly." The NCLB waiver that New Jersey has applied for, what does it do? Well, it implements a tiered system that is going to recognize schools for making progress. That's something NCLB never did. It's going to focus the resources of the state on providing turnaround interventions for the lowest performing schools so they can concentrate the resources where they feel they are best, best used. And they've also set up these New Jersey Department of Education Regional Achievement Centers in order to provide the assistance needed to the lowest performing schools. Okay. The three tiers. The new system that's going to replace the benchmarks. Schools are going to be characterized really into three different groups, well, four, if you count the ones that aren't in any one of these three. The lowest 5% of all of New Jersey schools are going to be called or labeled by the state each year as priority schools. And what criteria will be used? We've been given general information that they're going to be using proficiency levels, growth, and graduation rate to label schools each year as priority schools. There, if you are not on that list, you may be a focus school, which includes 10% of the next lowest performing schools, using achievement gaps, low performance, and low graduation rates as the criteria. Again, very general criteria, we don't have specifics yet. Okay. The third tier, and this is, I put this in effect of the waiver on Freehold Regional status. Well, the third tier are, is called a reward school. Okay? So, we jump up, we have the bottom five, then the next 10, then there's this whole, what they call the gray area of schools that don't, don't fit in any category. And at the very top, there's us. The preliminary data released by the state places three of our high schools into the reward school category. Now, again, this is preliminary, it isn't official yet, but it is, it is on their website. We're, we're labeled there, Freehold Township, Howe High School, Manalapan, meet their very general criteria that we don't have specifics about yet, called high proficiency levels, high growth, making progress toward closing achievement gaps. And they say that, that we will be eligible for reward money if we do get into this category. I don't know how much the reward money is, I'm sure we will, I'm anxious to find that out. And we will be given every opportunity to share our best practices theoretically with the people on the other end, 5 and 10, 10%. Okay. We will be posting more information on our website. We do have an NCLB parent resource page off of the main Freehold Regional High School District website, and I encourage everybody to visit. We are putting information up there on a regular basis about testing and resources for parents. I do want to thank everyone for the opportunity to present. Yep, this is a very exciting time and I just have attended some trainings and it's like, you just can't wait to see how, where this is going to go because it's really an exciting time. Does anyone have any questions that I can answer for you? Yes.
The, there were three schools up there for reward schools?
Yes.
They were reward schools because of the data that was taken from HSBA results?
They were from, not only HESPA results, they were all the data that the whole Department of Education has about us. They said our high proficiency levels, so going back, I'm assuming that they're looking at, yes, the HESPA performance, also the AMAO for the ELL students. They also have our, and of course, assessment data. They also talk about high growth. They don't say what high growth means. How high is high? I don't know. We haven't been told that. And also progress toward closing achievement gaps, so the performance minority groups vis a vis the general population. How much does it have to close? I, I don't know. But they, what happened was the department was, as part of the waiver application, had to be able to produce a preliminary list that showed if you did this today, who would be your lowest performing? Your next, and then your highest.
Here's how we were notified, Michael. I got a paragraph-long email from the
I got a paragraph-long email from the DOE that said, "We are going to ultimately name reward schools in our new system we're moving forward to." There's a bunch of general criteria. We are not going to identify that criteria at this point in time. This data is based on last year's data. However, we want you to know that three of your schools would be reward schools if we could tell you what the criteria was for a reward school. So, you know, honestly, it's very difficult to put stock in that at this point in time, because until we see what those specific criteria are, you know, I think it's an unfair knock to our other three schools, and it pits school against school without really realizing what that specific criteria was. So, I think we're all anxiously awaiting some specifics on this as it, as that, that three-tiered system, or really four-tiered system, the yet-identified, to-be-determined tier manifests itself.
Any other questions?
Yes. So, the NCLB benchmarks are based on the percentage of students who are proficient and advanced proficient, correct?
Correct.
Do we know if the trends are similar in that we outperform our similar DFG groups in the percent that are advanced proficient only?
I haven't analyzed the percent of advanced proficient. I've looked at proficient and advanced proficient grouped together, because that's how all the reports come, that's, you know, that's something that certainly could be done. When I've looked at them, our percentage of advanced proficiency are very impressive. But have I done, you know, line-by-line analysis? Not, not as of today. I certainly couldn't do that. That's something that, I hadn't noticed, you know, we have very high-performing students here, but it wouldn't be fair for me to say, oh yes, we outperform anyone until I have a chance to really analyze all that. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Question. Now, when you have your classified students or your subgroups, they are taking the same exam. How do you expect some of your classified students, not starting to take classified special ed students, to be able to pass it at the, you know, rate that they want them to?
Well, I mean, that is actually part of the reason why I think the NCLB waiver was put into place. However, I would say that not all of the classified or special ed needs students are required to pass.
There is a percent, right.
There is a percentage of students who are so profoundly affected by their disability, they are not required through their IEP to pass the HESPA. Most are required to take the HESPA. All students, regardless of disability status, are required to take an assessment. There is a specific assessment called the APA assessment, that's specifically for children who have profound disabilities. So, every child is assessed unless they're medically fragile and not able to test.
If there's anyone in the public who has a question for Jen, they can, they can address it when they, to their public participation. Jen, I'd like to thank you for all the work you're doing, and also for putting up with the state of New Jersey, who is obviously a...
Never don't know.
Well, I won't even finish my statement. Yes. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have board reports. Are there any board reports?
Sorry, I do have one. It's kind of, it doesn't fall into any of the categories. The Patch.com is an online, hyper-local news, and I believe we have Freehold, Howell, Manalapan, and Marlboro. And the larger patch company is running a contest where houses can submit a picture of how they've decorated their, their house for the holidays, and you submit it online, and then you have finalists. The winner of the contest will actually have $100,000 donated to their school district, which would be a very nice thing to have. So, I've noticed in Freehold and in Manalapan that there are some houses that are incredible, the lights that are up there, obviously professionally done, but should be submitted. I know as an individual, not as a board member, I plan on writing a letter to these residents, and if anybody on the board knows of a specific address that they think would be a good contender, I'm more than willing to share that letter.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. There we are. Any other board reports? Seeing none, we come to public participation. We have only one name on the list.
Are you sure you're not George Carlin?
Yeah, I'm a Manalapan resident, so I remember that Manalapan is there, but I can remember whether he was in math or English. And then when you mentioned about the schools that the mayor said, Old Snack and Marlboro, but you did not mention Manalapan before that.
Yes.
You did.
No, she's on...
No, they were so...
No, Manalapan was on the list.
I'm saying, it's general...
Yes, yeah.
I was confused about the first couple of slides you put up, which showed that our district exceeded the levels, and then you went on to say how we're a district in need of improvement.
Well, that confused me too. Not you. That's why we're putting, New Jersey's putting for the waiver, because schools are identified as in need of improvement despite what you saw.
That's an average.
So the one that said, the students that raised them above were brought down by the one that...
Right. The entire district was in fact, was brought down by one student.
And, and if, if you think about it, 240 indicators, so we had to meet 240. We met 237 of those indicators, but you're a district in need of improvement if you don't meet one under that. So, there were three that, that we did not meet, and even one of those three involved as many out-of-district students as it did in-district students, but we, under the criteria, you know, those are our children, so those scores are reflected as well. So it's a very, it's a stringent expectation.
So if that's the case, do any school not get a B I N O?
Any district in need of improvement?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think there was a, you know, there was a dramatic increase in the number of districts in need of improvement throughout the state with those escalating requirements. You know, what you see from NCLB is you see a certain number of states across the country saying, "We're not, we're out. We're not, we're not going to take your money, and we're not going to be beholden to this. We're going to develop our own assessment systems." New Jersey is in the process of the waiver. The, you know, $100,000 question is, what does that waiver entail? And what are we on the hook for in taking that waiver from NCLB as, as a state? And I think there will be a lot of caveats with that related to, you know, quote-unquote "educational reform." It's, it's an interesting time. I think, you know, the landscape is shifting a little bit under us, and how that plays out over the next couple of years is going to be a little bit disruptive, because we're, we're contracted out with Measurement Incorporated to do the HESPA. That's the company that puts that together. And the HESPA is going away ultimately. However, we can't stop the brakes soon enough, so we're going to take the HESPA, but we're not quite sure how that's all going to factor out over the next year or two while they sort the rest of this out. And so I think that that term "flexibility" in there is key, because what's that, what that is going to allow, hopefully, some of the more high-performing districts to do, or to develop some of their own benchmarks to be, be judged against, and not be quite so, you know, beholden to a, a particular standard. So, you know, the ground is shifting a little bit, and, and, you know, we'll, we'll meet it head-on.
With that said, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Oh.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Unanimous. Thank you for coming.